Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 27th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, can I have her call, please?
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Here.
Morsett. Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the November 13th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next approval of the bills with Mr. Beirstead.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for approval of payment of the bills in the amount of $1,303,560.55.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience that has anything they want to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Yep, go on forward and sign in and...
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Hopefully you can hear me fine. Last week I had the privilege of going to the scoping meeting on November 15th. I think that was last week, right? I did. There it was. And I found it interesting. I'm trying to figure out what's going on from what was voted on February 27th by the Council. It sounds as though things have been changed. It sounds as though that the city is only looking for one license for the upper dam and that the lower dam is not going to be relicensed. And that is not what was voted on and approved on in our resolution back on the 27th of February. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way it sounds that we are licensing. And when we approved our resolution back in February, it's, we stated that the City Council established an 11-person Kenny Corridor Project Committee to guide the planning process, to recommend to the City Council an appropriate action regarding the relicensings of the decision. We said that the City of River Falls operates two, mind you again, two hydroelectric facilities on a Kenny Connect River known as the Hydroelectric Project. So we there defined that the project is two. And then we as well said that the Kenny Corridor Project Committee recommends that the City relicens the hydroelectric project. Again, that's the two for the final time. So, planning process shall establish a fiscally responsible financing plan to implement the recommendation, again, of the two dams of the project. It is understood that the fiscally responsible financing means to use locally, local general property, no local general property taxes or levies. The City and the tax holder organizations will form a public-private partnership to seek funds for the removal of the dams and the project. In the private partnership, we'll address projected losses from the accelerated dam removal. We said the City Council hereby finds that the future of the Kenny Connect River Corridor shall be based on a long-term vision of a free-flowing Kenny Connect River, which we all agreed. And we also all approved on this, and I say "we" because I was a council person at the time. And then our final statement was, now therefore, be it further resolved that the common council of the City of River Falls approve the relicensings of the hydroelectric project for the final time. And again, the project is the two dams. So what I'm asking is, is that what we're doing? Because that's not what FERC said last week. They said that we were going to be relicensings one and not relicensings the second one.
Well, I know this is only comments, but as far as I know, one is one project and both, and the project is both dams, so we're relicensing them with the intent that the first one will come out by 2026.
Okay.
It's part of the process.
All right. Because what was said last week, Mayor Dan, and I know you weren't there for that first meeting, they did not say that. And for a number of us, it was frightening. And part of the reasons that we know that we wanted to relicens both is because of the private partner partnership, that those monies have to be found. And as you shared, not only that no new tax levies, but that no new rates would be involved too. Now, that new rates did not get involved or put into our resolution, but what was said was license both dams and that was going to be a partner, a partnership to take care of this. So, I hope that's what we're doing and I hope that we don't have a situation of the fox watching that hen house on this, but I hope it gets taken care of properly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Beirstead. Anybody else have anything? Anybody in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to the Utility Advisory Board. We'll give a report tonight. And the Chair, Adam, Adam, like I tell you every time, I'm gonna butcher your last name.
Macheski.
Macheski. Close?
Very good. Thank you very much for having me, staff, council persons, Mayor. Appreciate it. Just give you a kind of a quick overview of kind of what we've done this year and, you know, what we're about and how we work with the City Council. Who we are, we're the Utility Advisory Board, and we're comprised of six citizens who are appointed by the Mayor and then confirmed by the City Council. And we each serve a three-year term and they're staggered throughout. In addition, there's one council person representative on the board, and that's Ms. Odine. Our agenda and minutes are available online, just like the City Council minutes. They're posted on the bulletin board upstairs at City Hall and that are also available if you call the office at 715-425-0906. This is just kind of a breakdown of each of the council people with Diane as the council representative and myself as the Chair, Kellen Wells Mangold. He's fairly new to the board. Tim Toome, who's been around for a while on the board. Patrick, Kevin Swanson, and Mark Spafford, who is also very new to the board this year. That's the happy family. Picture taken, I think, last week. All of us finally made it for a picture, so that was good. We meet at 6:30 PM on the third Monday of every month, right here in the City Council chambers. And what is our role? What we do is we assist the Council in identifying key roles and kind of working as a focus group. We're also advisors to the City Council for utility policy issues. We're customer advocates, public policy, public utility advocates and community champions for initiatives that are developed by the UAB staff. We're also liaison to the community and Council, and we're initiative supporters. Kind of a year in review, some of the bigger things that we've had come before us, as you know. Number one was the relicensing of the hydroelectric project. We also worked on the wastewater and water SCADA contract. We also, Mike, with a lot of help from Mike Noreen, he put together a wonderful Powerful Choices 10-year report, which is quite lengthy and quite a bit of work for Mike. And kind of the last thing on this page is, we, via the ordinances with the City, I had always been referred to as a President and we had a Secretary. We now change that to Chair and Vice Chair, to be more in line with city ordinances. One of the big initiatives that came from Kevin was St. Croix Valley Initiative or Innovative Center Utility Sponsorship. I believe that was $55,000 that we partnered with them on. We completed a SWOT analysis for our water utility and approved the new water business plan. Just last week, we approved two TRC Solutions consulting contracts for assistance in the FERC licensing project, which, as you know, is quite lengthy and quite involved. And we approved an Energous High Voltage Contract for $13,530 to test integrity after fire at the Junction Falls hydrobreakers. Kevin's done, and staff has done a great job of keeping our group in the loop on what's going on with the AMI metering plans, which is advanced metering infrastructure. We've also approved the directional boring contracts that are, I believe, happening right now. And we approved sewer lining contract. And we also approved the compliance maintenance annual report for our wastewater treatment plant. Some of the things that we have coming up for next year that we know of right now would be finalizing the approval for AMI metering throughout the city. We're going to consider the new aeration systems and front-end screening at the wastewater treatment plant. Transformer consideration for the South Fork Substation. We're going to work on a business plan and approving that for sewer. And we're possibly going to be taking a look at the electric rates, which haven't been raised for, I believe it's been about 11 years now. And we're going to continue giving direction and advisement with the FERC relicensing project as that moves through the process. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I noticed that in your minutes from this last meeting, maybe you or Kevin could answer this question, that we had a sewer line in the internal substation over there that was filled with concrete due to an XL project.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like that XL came through and paid for the complete restoration and a new pipe that went in the ground.
Yep.
Correct. That's accurate, yes. We had a little bit of back and forth with them, but in the end, they ended up paying that entire bill to have that relocated after that incident at the substation.
So no ratepayer money out of the city or taxpayer money was used for that?
Nope. That was all reimbursed by XL Energy for that.
Awesome. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Adam.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for everything that you guys do on the board, too. It's greatly appreciated.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2018-15. This is about amending the official map. This is the second reading and disposition. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing. And I will take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of ordinance 2018-15, amending the official map.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
I read in the packet, and I believe this is Reed, noted that in updating the map, staff encountered a data glitch and lost, that led to loss some of the notes from the Plan Commission Workshop earlier in this year. However, believes everything has been reincorporated. My question is, did this glitch get fixed?
Did the glitch get fixed? We were not able to get the data back, but what that was, we were taking notes in our GIS database at the meeting and those, that database got reverted to an earlier version. So we had to, we had to, from our other handwritten notes at the meeting, recreate that. We were trying to be efficient getting it right into the database and I kind of got bit on that. But we had, we had numerous staff at that meeting, went over it, recreated the notes, and then brought it back up to the Plan Commission for the last go-around to make sure that everybody was happy with where it was at.
So it was updated and replaced essentially?
Yes, absolutely. Correct.
Okay. And I think you answered my second question, was, did anybody from the Plan Commission have any other questions about it? So I think it's all been looked over. Perfect. Thanks, Reed.
I think we spent three or four meetings with the Plan Commission going over it, so.
Yep. Spent a lot of time on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I got first and second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to, thanks Reed. Next move on to the consent agenda. First one is acknowledgement of the following minutes. The Park and Rec Advisory Board from 10:17, Utility Advisory Board from 10:15, the Bid Board from 9:11, the Planning Commission from 9:02, or I'm sorry, from 10:02, the River Falls Housing Authority from 10:10, and the River Falls Public Library from 10:01. And then a resolution improvement, appoint of Amy White as the interim City Treasurer. Next one is a resolution approving state municipal financial agreement for a statelet highway project, which is Cemetery Road, South 29, from South Main Street to State Highway 65. This resolution would authorize the City Administrator to sign the agreement. Next one is a resolution regarding the lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS on our Sycamore Water Tower. So does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Items 5 and 6.
Anybody else?
I'd like to pull number 7.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of Consent Agenda Item Number 4, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Downing, you pulled 5 and 6.
Resolution approving appointment of Amy White as interim City Treasurer. So my question is about the position itself, not the person. So consolidating the two positions into one presents a potential level of risks. What process of oversight will be in place to create and maintain accountability like a business would have normally for a position like this?
Well, until a few, well, it's been more than a few years now since Julie held both of those positions as Clerk and Treasurer, but it's, it's pretty common to do that. And I would suggest that these two positions don't attribute to significant accountability within our system. So we rely on, to a certain extent, the rotating bill approval by, or review by council members, the appointed controller that the council has, to a limited extent auditors, because they're not auditing everything, but they're looking at testing some processes. And then ultimately, the purchasing and expenditure policies that require certain, different levels of approval based on the level of spending. But there isn't anything that I'm aware of or can think of in our purchasing policy that says City Treasurer has to approve this or that. So I would suggest that this position is a statutory required position, and there is some duties under 62. I was going to look it up quick, but to try to remind myself. But basically, there's a bunch of Treasurers shall do things like keep a log and an account, and we're doing that all through accounting systems in our policies. So there could be a level of accountability that could be confused by putting these two roles together. I suspect those would be things that dealt with the expenditure of money by the Clerk, because now the Clerk and the Treasurer would be the same person, but that's more of a theoretical than an actual, because in both cases, the Clerk and the Treasurer need approval by the Finance Director and the, and the City Administrator, so.
How many times have we done this before, when we've had an interim, like where we've consolidated two positions?
I don't think we've done an interim since I've been here. So the thought here is that we're doing interim because we want to make sure we have somebody in that position and role. It's an opportunity for Ms. White to learn those responsibilities too. But long-term, the expectation is that the Finance Director position will likely fill that Treasurer role.
Do we have a timeline on that?
We will hire a Finance Director and we will find one that meets our expectations. So I would say as soon as three months or two months from now, but it could be longer than that.
Okay. Well, I think Amy will do a great job, so. Mr. Mayor, I move approval for Consent Agenda Item Number 5.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, next one, you pulled 6, too.
Resolution approving state municipal financial agreement for a statelet highway project, Cemetery Road, South 29, from South Main Street to South 65. There's a lot, there's a good amount to this, and I'm just curious if everything's been hammered out on both sides.
This actually just pertains to Cemetery Road itself, from Main Street over to State Highway 65. They're going to mill the pavement on Main Street, curb to curb, really no changes. It's really, it's a more structural milling overlay going down much deeper than we would normally do. They may make some minor adjustments at the roundabout from a truck standpoint. There's some discussions about the two entrances of Emery Circle onto Cemetery. But this is, this is pretty much a straightforward portion of the project. This is, this is being done jointly with South Main Street or Highway 2935 from Cemetery Road down all the way to Prescott is going to get redone. And as you know, we've had some discussions with the DOT trying to influence the, the shape that that project will take on, especially between Cemetery Road and FFP. That's a different issue than this. This is really just Cemetery Road, and it's saying that we will pay this $30,000 towards, towards the design cost on that. We will pay nothing towards construction on it. Construction is going to be well over half million dollars on that section, and we paid, we will pay nothing on that unless we request something very unique and special from a city standpoint.
So they're just waiting for us to pay in 25% for them to kick in the 75% then?
Sorry, what was that?
They're just waiting for us to kick in the remaining 25% then?
Yeah. I mean, this is just really a formality here. Their, their, their protocol calls for, on a connecting highway, which is what Cemetery Road is, that the locals must participate in the design, but you don't participate in the construction. We do have to maintain it after it's constructed. So it really is, this is fairly cut and dried on this, and there's not a lot of changes that will happen with Cemetery Road, other than that horrendous east end will finally get reconstructed.
And Reed, if, if I may ask, this is, this is a project that's been in the works since 2011, isn't it?
Yeah, this was, this was incorporated into the Cascade Avenue project when we moved the State Highway down there, and there were all sorts of agreements and kind of horse trading done. Value for this road, value for that road. Had that not happened, we would have been doing a milling overlay on Cemetery Road with our own maintenance funds. We'll pull this $30,000 out of our maintenance funds. It's, like I say, otherwise we would be spending significantly more than that had it been our own project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Reed. Mr. Mayor, I move approval for Consent Agenda Item Number 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then Mr. Gagne, you pulled number 7.
I just pulled number 7. I'm gonna have to abstain like from this one as well as I did the last one. Their mobile service towers are a direct competitor with my employer.
Okay. And so I'll take a motion on that.
I move approval of Consent Agenda Item Number 7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinance's resolution. First one is a resolution approving Sterling Pond's first additional addition, final plat. This is a resolution would approve the final plat, and this was reviewed by the Planning Commission and it's November 6th meeting, and we forwarded on to the Council. So I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution approving Sterling Pond's first addition final plat.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have one comment.
Yep.
Or question, I should say. Are the covenants in this agreement, our continued agreement, the same as they were already? In Sterling Pond's?
I want to make sure I understand the question. I believe the answer is yes. Are you speaking, so there's covenants in the corporate park, which are separate from the residential covenants that would have been recorded by the original developer of the residential area. So I'm not sure. Amy, are you sure if they're recording new residential covenants with this, or if they're using the, the Archon residential covenants?
Yeah, so our developers' agreement originally with Archon rolls over to any, you know, other property owners in continuance. So that rolls into and is considered covenants as it, as it moves forward.
Okay. Does that answer your question? So? So nothing changed in that?
So they're used, they are, I want to be careful about, nothing changed. There's been a number of changes in the different plating, but if I understand your question, will these homes be operating under the same covenants as the other homes? The answer is yes.
Okay.
But obviously, there's adjacent property that is operating under different covenants than these. And there's probably some additional covenants in the other platted areas because there's, there's townhomes and things in the, the...
There may be separate covenants in Sterling Heights. I'm not positive on that.
When you look on, and I'll have Amy just stand there and make sure she, I'm saying the right thing, I understand it. If you look at the map on page, it is 47 of the packet. That shows several designations. There's some red lines showing the future park. And then there's a notation of platted. So all the blank lots, those are the ones that are there already. And then it's showing all these additional lots. That whole grouping of lots is under the same covenants that would have been recorded originally for Archon, for residential development. Correct?
If I understood where you were going with that, yes.
But then if you look north on that, there's some other platted areas, in particular the, you know, where the church, where the churches and where the, the townhomes are, they've, they've likely got different recorded covenants on those areas.
Okay.
And the churches change, you know, the church is different from the original plating. So it depends on what date you're asking me if there's any changes from it. There's been a number of changes out there.
That answers my question. Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions or comments on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is a resolution approving professional services agreement with TRC Solutions for hydroelectric relicensing. This would be year two. This would just authorize us using TRC for consulting support for year two of the relicensing with FERC.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of number nine, resolution approving professional services with TRC in the hydrorelicensing, year number two.
Second.
Before you vote, could I bring up one thing that Dan Gustafson brought up to me today? In Article 19 of the consulting agreement, I just changed one thing according to Dan. In Article 19, it says state of, state of TRC entity formation. I had that changed today by TRC to state of Wisconsin, according to Dan, so.
Still maintain my motion for approval.
Questions or comments?
I'm curious if we have an estimate for the overall cost for the relicensing process. So starting, you know, fall of 2018 through the spring of 2023, what I've seen was like $200,000 estimated. What, what is our current cost estimate?
I believe we had, I can't remember if it was 200 or 250 budgeted for that, but you're right in that ballpark.
And, and that's what I recall.
Yes.
And we've contracted with TRC for $80,000 for the notice of intent in the pad that was completed in August. And now we're contracting with them for $65,000 for year two of the relicensing process. I just wonder if we should look back at that cost estimate and adjust that appropriately for what we expect. TRC Solutions provide us in 2014 with potential costs for just the studies associated to be somewhere between $200,000 and $400,000 with a license application with a settlement agreement. So I would just suggest we look back at that cost estimate and make adjustments as we see appropriate.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Resolution, next one is a resolution approving developers' agreement between the City River Falls and Interfacial LLC. This resolution would approve the agreement with Interfacial LLC to replace the water main between Troy Street and Palmeroy Street.
Mr. Mayor, just a few points of clarification. You were, you did receive a memorandum, and there isn't any substantial changes to what's outlined in the memorandum, but the, the agreement itself, Attorney Gustafson had a few suggestions that didn't change the, they made it more clear what we're doing, and I thought they were good changes. So you received a red line of those. And as you can see, some of them are, you know, changing the tents or, instead of saying cost for, it's cost of, but it just helps to make some things clear. I don't expect any of these changes to, to be a concern to Interfacial. And Interfacial has a few different LLCs, so we just did clarify that this agreement would be with Interfacial Holdings, which is a real estate LLC. They're the property owner at, I believe it's 949 Antler Court, which is the building that Stratus is in, and they are the property owner here at 280... that Stratusus is in, and they are the property owner here at 283 Troy Street. City attorney did suggest that the city could add to this agreement condition where you'd pledge the mortgage against the $70,000 contribution. And I consider that, but I don't, I'm not recommending that we do that. I don't, I think our payment history with them has been good, and it's a public improvement that they're agreeing to pay 50% of. So in a worst-case scenario, we'd, we'd pay 100% of a public, public improvement. So there, you can make an argument that you should pledge the mortgage, but we are, they are signing an agreement that says they're going to pay their 50% over five years and at an agreed-to percentage, and I, I feel that's adequate, given our history with them. But that's just something you should be advised of, that the city attorney pointed out to me also. So with that, if you have any questions on what we're doing here, we're essentially, we are, there's a bit of an odd water main, a significant water main that zigzags, and I'm sure, our best guess is it was where the town and the city boundary was at some point. And so the water main kind of snaked along what was that old city boundary when the town was, still had the north part of Main Street. We're not exactly sure that's why it is. It doesn't make a lot of sense from a maintenance perspective. From a pressure perspective, it doesn't gain much, but we gain some pressure by getting rid of all the, the turns. And there is certainly benefit, you could argue benefit to the private property here because it would free up five feet or six feet for building envelope, because they wouldn't have to worry about a water main break and, and foundation walls and things. So thus, we entered into an agreement that said, well, there's, we may not, we may have done this project by ourselves at some point, but we're accelerating a little bit for the development. And so that's why we've suggested developers' agreement, and they've agreed to pay a portion of it. So I think there's public and private benefit here. We just wanted to make sure the council was aware of what we're doing and have a chance to object if they'd, they'd like to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
What's the average life cycle of a water main? I know this one in the packet, it says it's 24 years old. What's our usual replacement or life cycle?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be over 60 years, but we, you know, you can get up to 100 years on a water main. I think we book value them at 40, Julie? Yeah, so they're depreci, so it depends on who you're asking what the life is, you know, the operational life, the PSC life, because in our rate cases, they're depreciated a certain amount. And that's, that's actually in part why we thought there could, could be more public money in this, because, you know, once this project is done, then you have a brand-new water main, so you're gaining 20 years of depreciation. And that was a consideration when we were negotiating this, to say, all right, what's, what's fair?
I think you guys took the proper approach to it and made sure that it was split 50/50, and obviously, it's benefiting their company and it'll benefit our corporate park, so I think it's a great use of resources.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? Do I have a motion?
Nope.
I move for the resolution approving the development agreement between the City of River Falls and Interfacial LLC.
Second.
Okay, now, any other questions or comments?
I do have a question regarding the red lined out here. Do we need any kind of formal amendment to this because there wasn't a notice given prior to the meeting? Or is it okay just to accept this as is? I, I think it's all right to, to go ahead and approve it as amended. Like Scott said, it's not really a change to the deal, it's more editorial changes to tighten it up a little bit and make it clearer. All right, thanks.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to reports. Got the administrator's report, if anybody has anything for Scott? Has anything for us?
I have a couple of things I'll just point out. The, we're only planning one council meeting in December. We suspected that you'd like each other, but not enough to spend Christmas together at 6:30 at City Hall. So December 11th, 2018 will be the last meeting, council meeting of 2018. So I guess that would be a notice to the council, but also to the public, that if you have things that need action, official action by the city council, we don't typically do some kind of resolution that allows the city administrator to do whatever needed to be done from December 12th to, to the next council meeting. So if people are trying to get projects done or doing things, they'll have to get going by December 11th meeting. There's also a workshop that evening at 5:00. That workshop is for council to kind of go over the Kinney corridor plan. We should have a substantial draft of the report available prior to the December 11th meeting. So the expectation is you'll kind of be able to read what, what we're putting together. I know all of you have been following the process through, so it's mostly review, but it's certainly be an opportunity for the council in a public meeting to, to address any questions they have or concerns, and certainly you don't have to wait till the workshop. You can, can do those with, with any of the staff that are involved or myself. Holiday Open House is at the library Thursday, December 6th. It's an all-day event for the hours that the, the library is open. It's a free event, there's live music, lots of things for the community and children. And all events are in the main level of the public library. Their gingerbread contrast, the entries are due Wednesday, December 5th, and the judging is December 6th at that Holiday Open House. I have received a couple inquiries from council members regarding the next steps for the cooperative boundary agreement with the town of Kinnikinik. The, the bargaining, or the negotiating members of the city and the town are meeting Thursday to discuss the comments that they received. We, staff is waiting for that meeting to occur before we take any next, next steps. We expect that the committee will give us some direction on whether they're going forward, assuming that they are. Staff will put together kind of a summary of some of the issues we've heard from individual council members or others, kind of a frequently asked questions and a regular memorandum packet supporting the action, whatever action is recommended by the bargain, the bargaining committee or the negotiating, not bargaining, the negotiating committee. And so that's what the next steps are planned. Staff isn't responding to the public comments or sending letters back to the folks that put comments in. Those were received by both entities, town and city, so we're letting the official group kind of mull those over first. And it's possible they'll give staff from either the town or the city direction and say, we want you to do XYZ, and then, assuming it's a reasonable request, we'll do it as, as quickly as possible. I don't expect any action at the December 11th council meeting on the cooperative boundary agreement. Any action by the city council is likely to occur at the earliest in January, probably not at the first meeting, perhaps at the second meeting, which may be confusing because we also expect that the Kinney plan, the corridor plan, will have some action on that second meeting in January. So those are the two things that people have been asking, and kind of where's the next steps on that? And I'm still looking for community members or interested parties that are wanting to participate in the, the imagining or the, the assembling of the public-private partnership group. So I, I do have eight or nine names from people that have volunteered to be part of that discussion, and then we're, we're working on that over the next few months to kind of get that formulated. So if you know of people that you think would be a good fit for a yet-as-undefined mission, but primarily their mission would be to implement the Kinney corridor plan that the, that you adopt in January. City offices are closed the 24th and the 25th, and they're also closed on the 1st. So we are open on the 31st, and we'll be staffed here for, for that. So reminder that tax bills, which have not, not gone out yet, those are primarily received at the two county treasurer's offices. If people bring them here, we make sure they get, get to the counties, but we ask that people mail those to the county if they can or take.
Okay, anybody got anything for Scott, any questions or anything?
I'd just like to commend utility staff for the beautiful lights that are downtown. I think it's another fantastic display.
Yep, I agree. Okay, let's move on to Comptroller's Report with Diane.
Yes, this is the Comptroller's Report for October 2018. General fund revenues through the end of October were $8,148,564 or 81% of budgeted. Revenues in October include $168,294 in fourth quarter transportation aids and $34,251 in franchise fees. Expenditures for the same period were $8,65,776 or 80% of budgeted, for a net of revenues over expenditures of $82,788.
Thanks. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.